It is time.
I'm starting the meeting. I'll call the meeting in order, roll call.
Steve Hare.
Here.
Carol Moncombe here.
Jay Jones.
Here.
Jesse Murphy.
Here.
Dean Unraff.
Here.
Mayor Ewing.
Here.
Chris Erdman.
Here.
Kevin Tapp.
Here.
Sandy Furtier.
Approve agenda.
My caution.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, on favor?
Aye.
Approve minutes for April 6th and April 13th, and the April 13th sprint meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the, is this for both meetings or?
Yes.
Okay, for both meetings, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve claims list for month of April.
The claims that I got today, they're laying on the table, it's just because we didn't print out.
No, this is something else.
I had a couple of questions, I didn't look at them yet, but one of them, we've got one little sheet. Oh, I know. Are the lights in the tops of the buildings causing a lot of electrical? Have you seen much, are you guys impressed? So, we just had a, on Iowa State, they were actually putting in the Iowa State angeleding. So then we had to redo that, because they was actually running off there like, sure, for a while. That's the best way. So we have that danger, huh?
No, I haven't seen any trouble, if you've been, like, maybe broke a ball here and there, well, got it.
I just kind of wondered if you were hearing that, I hadn't heard anything from anybody, other than they talked to them nice.
I see we transferred out money to the library, have we received any accounting from them?
No.
Nothing still got them.
But they're all, I don't know. I know.
Aren't they starting to open again?
They're allowed to.
I thought I just opened it on Facebook or something.
Yeah, so I did too, I did see that one. Yeah, I think too. Oh, I know, how long the community people TV thing is in the hole? Or that, yeah, because you budgeted it so much. And then.
That's one. On the dream sheets?
Yeah, we're at eight pounds, the budget was like forty-five, so we're like three thousand.
Yeah, because we have a budget, and they could do that. We thought we could like something, but we haven't did.
Oh, okay, because I figured, you budgeted, you figured what's coming in, so I thought, what happens there?
Did you guys look at the job that O'Brien roofing did?
Oh, see, I'm here.
Yeah.
No.
They were ready to bathe, no water was coming in, so that's.
Well, that's why it's not around the door, right?
Well, that's a plus.
But sometimes you gotta rank it hard for the.
Okay.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
I second.
Moved and seconded to accept the claims list, and that's what they added?
Correct.
Okay. And any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, claims list passed. Inquiries from the audience. There's no audience here, well, there's somebody online. But that's okay. Reports, mayor, department heads, and committee reports, I didn't really have anything other than the, on COVID, they are opening the city back up. They're starting to open businesses and stuff like that, I saw a couple more are open. JW's is not going to, they're gonna keep on takeout for a while. And so, and I don't know about further down, but the restrictions are quite heavy for restaurants and stuff now anyway.
We actually stopped at a place at the Lakes Friday afternoon, and that gal had tables turned over, you know, and then had to be separated that way around. And it wasn't busy, busy, but there was probably ten people in there, so, it was kind of neat the way they did it, I thought.
And that doesn't.
How else do you stop people from sitting?
Yeah, and their fifty percent capacity, or around up to fifty percent.
And they had a bar and stuff in there, but those people, the couple that were there, were just like two or three stools that way from each other too, so.
And our, our eating as average ones don't seat that many anyway.
Right.
I think he, as JW explained to me, that people would be entering and leaving the same door and paying upfront, so it'd just be too difficult.
I think it hurts if one wait a couple more weeks.
No, neither.
You know, I think as long as we can get food from them, it works.
Yep.
And O'Brien County's still sitting at eleven total, and probably seven active with one person in the hospital.
Oh, there is one in hospital.
There was, that person, I don't know if it's he or she, but that person's been in the hospital for quite a while, so I don't remember his address, so. And so, on that, so that's our report. As y'all know, Woodbury County's just going through the roof right now, they're, they're, so. And that's another reason for not wanting to open the restaurant stuff, because they're all gonna be up here on the way to the lakes. So, he's kind of afraid they might be stopping here for that, so. And that, so going on, that's all that I have, you guys are up.
Business on the electric side of things.
My side didn't get the, get me to complain about water, because they called me last Wednesday after dinner, and wanted to come Friday to clean and inspect the tower, so I had the water tower empty Friday morning.
Oh, my gosh, gave you a lot of notice.
Oh, yeah, they gave me a lot of notice, but they're fighting the same problem with all this COVID, they got a lot of towns where they're like, oh, you can't do it, so they're trying to schedule them.
Oh, my gosh, I see.
So, they're.
That explains why I got the call. Well. I said, just wait, he'll probably be back, and I wasn't aware you were inspecting the water tower at times.
That was empty, so we got the pump running continuous.
Yeah.
With a bypass set up out of the reservoir, but the one pump decided didn't want to run anymore, it's like a trip.
So when you empty the water tower, where does the water go, is this on the ground, you just dump it out, or where does it go?
Yeah.
I wondered.
Well, I shut it off right away on Wednesday, so town used most of it by Friday morning.
Seems to fall off pools. Probably didn't happen down there. I did.
Well, the fact is, I literally walked into the grocery store Saturday, because it happened Saturday, right, or Sunday?
Saturday.
I walked into the grocery store to get something, and I'm like, the water's off, and I'm like.
Like, you can do something about it, right?
Like, break up my console, you can do that.
Didn't you know, like, no, this is the first time I'm hearing about it.
You were so lucky, you were for that.
Well, I was not there for sure for two weeks, if not the whole month of May, I'm the worst kid you know.
Well, I was, I kind of figured, and I said, I'll text Chris, but I'm pretty sure he already knows about it, because I'm, don't you have alarms that go off and stuff?
Yeah, well, our alarms were shut off because of everything.
Yeah, because water.
So wasn't it?
Everybody had funny goals.
Yeah.
They got funny goals, they got many goals.
People asking.
Luckily, I was only two blocks away from the plant when it happened, so, I mean, it wasn't, it really wasn't off long, but.
They called me back right away and said, it's back on.
I was about ready to leave the grocery store, I was, oh, never mind, I'm like, sorry, more people.
I mean, I've really gotten the texts.
I'm sure there was some places at times that had, had no water, but at the plant, we still had, still had like twenty or twenty-five PSI.
Well, it was the afternoon, too, so you thought everybody had a bed of showers and all that other stuff, but.
I do have, because there's some baby on the.
Big boss.
See, do you realize that, there's like.
I knew it once, the moon, if I want to get something.
Okay. Someone asked me, like, do you know about that, I'm like. There's some gross baby on the tower.
Oh, my lord.
And you're far from the person who wanted to climb up there.
First time it happened was around Raggride, the second time was it happened just a year or two ago.
Some sweet little high school kids?
Yeah. It's right out, it's on the bottom.
I was saying, it's kind of.
I was gonna say, for them to get up there.
I was gonna say that.
There's no way for them to get up there.
Thank God, thank God. You never know what some of that stuff does to them.
That sounds like something we tried back in the seventies. The old tower, we could, I knew that. Not to say I ever did that.
Not that she would do that, but I think she was one of those.
Okay. And Sandy.
I don't have anything.
Whoa.
Hey.
Okay, well, then we can just move right on to requests for a community garden.
Didn't you say Danny was my shirt at that too, or we're talking about that, or not?
I had, I thought it was somebody in that hometown, Mark, we were asked about it once, and then he would never, came back about it, or.
I knew you mentioned something on it, I guess, I don't know why I thought you were saying it.
The space Mark Myers told me just here at the last RAC meeting, of course, because I live down the street from him, he thought that Joel Mueller would donate that lot for it.
What lot? Where he's at.
Where he's at? Mark Myers.
Right behind Mark Myers.
Yeah.
On that empty lot.
Oh, okay. Sure, that's where that house went down, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Is Mark Myers gonna run the garden?
That's what I want to know.
I think he says, he said if we put it there, he would watch it and take care of it, the way I have.
Yeah, it's right there. I know, I wonder how that would roll.
Yeah.
Why? He just asked Joel if he can plant his own garden there.
Yeah, and we'll see how that goes. Oh, he keeps it up.
But, yeah, so he gave me the, he handed me the Samborn, I guess, because Samborn has a community garden and all the rules and stuff.
Did you tell him you already had that?
He's the one that gave it to me, and I gave it to Sandy, yeah, because I forwarded it to Sandy, because I didn't know.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So that's where it came from, is that.
Ambulances are quite a few years unless they've stopped, they used to do it years back too.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so you had it down in Long Hills, down in South West Fore.
I don't know, maybe it's brother in Spencer, they have, have, got enough.
Right, and sometimes it's churches that get together. So, I don't know, Samuel Church is now too. I don't know.
Well, if you could.
I think, I mean.
Can we get Mark here to a meeting or something? Especially since it's kind of secondhand, that we think.
He just, he just gave me this, and said, this is what Samborn, he just thought it would be, you know, with this COVID nineteen and stuff going on.
Something for people to do.
Something for people to do, yeah. You know.
I'm not completely against it, I just don't know how many complaints we're gonna get on it, yeah. So.
Well, it's all spread among the unions.
Well, it just sounds like here, you're like responsible, like whoever's saying you bought a plot, you're responsible, or whatever, you're responsible for it, you know, unless you hire somebody to do it, or ask.
No, they have a lot of good rules.
Yeah, I thought so too, they had a lot of good rules.
Yeah.
So.
Is it, when they say hired, they got water apparently set up there, I doubt they're pulling it off the fire right there, you know, so, it must have a water hooked up or something.
I mean, people might just have the green bucket, or a gallon, or their own water or something, you know, Toby.
Do a lot of praying for rain.
Yeah. You know, or that's something, if you talk to Mark, if he's gonna have a lot, that if he would just spray theirs or something too.
Well, I wonder if he's had people approach you about it, or if this is just his idea, and then see how it goes, I don't know.
Once it's on city property, I don't think, I don't think we'd have anything to do with it, if he wanted private property.
If he wanted it to do it on Jol's land or something, it'd be that.
Thoughts between him and Joel, kinda?
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's a good thought.
Since we're not donating a lot, it'd be different if we were or something, Samborn must have donated a lot or something.
They've got some of that.
So, if you want to go by these rules, you just have to pay enough to people then.
Yeah, he'd run it himself.
Our big control would be if it turns into a weed patch.
Yeah, if it turns into nuisance, then.
But if he's gonna kind of place it, which I would think, like you say, is.
He's right, oh, yeah, he's right behind it, you know, I would think it would be fine.
So can we just start sucking?
I don't think we have to do anything else.
Yep.
Yep.
If he's gonna do it on private property like this, like he said.
I mean, if Joel yell lets it, yeah.
I don't think we as a city want to donate property.
No.
Do that.
I don't either.
It'd probably be our luck, somebody to buy the property, you know, that we do.
Right.
So does she, Sandy just haven't sent you a letter?
Yeah.
Or something like that.
Only they have me and Laura, we were with Joel, you two worked together on it, with your people, whatever. They don't need to deal with the property.
No, if that's where, yeah, if he wants to put it.
Yep. And Joel, I think it's fine, and see how it goes.
And he could see how the water, messes and stuff on it too. All right?
Mark and Bull, those are his office.
Yeah.
We get the next spell.
Okay. Ambulance donation.
So why was Lori so mad?
Well.
I saw that they only took twenty-eight calls.
Right, but I was surprised when I got mine, that for their ambulance was asking our people in our town for a personal nightgown.
Lori just said that she felt that they should have called the police ambulance, and said, this is what we like to do, and, but like I said, Lori, you can't, you know, they don't need our permission to solicit a phone call, so.
Nope.
Because did Grant just come to our council meeting and ask us and not send a letter, correct?
Right, yes, they came to me, and then asked us for a donation. So I was amazed when I see this.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that. But I can see where Lori was a little upset.
Yeah, there would be nothing, yeah, yeah, one ambulance partners to cooperate and everything, but there would be nothing against PAS sending our plane ambulance, sending a letter to everybody.
Heard that too.
That's right. Sandy, you know, twenty-eight calls, was that like seven months since the first of the year, or do you have any idea?
No, she didn't.
Okay, I just wondered.
I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
No.
When they haven't answered, okay, requests for rent relief from Mercy One.
How much rent do they pay a month?
Five hundred dollars a month, and I think all of a sudden, it's like.
They pay the utilities?
Yes, they pay the utilities. So they want half for three months, right?
Yeah.
See, they're not open, so, I know, and that's why I really, I don't really have a problem with giving it to them, I don't know if though we're gonna start precedent or something, I mean, I don't know. We definitely want to keep it here, so.
Incumbents better up on hospitals and clinics.
Right.
I don't know of anything that, that out here, big families, they've, I don't know of anything they've requested.
Are they still open to you?
Yes, vapor looks pretty busy this morning when I drove by, in the hospital.
I've heard a lot of them are shooting on the surgery, elective surgeries.
So the electives, because I'm scheduled to go out.
Are you go?
Yeah, I'm scheduled to go out there at eighteen, so.
Okay.
To get physical for that, so. Yeah, that is a, tired Olympic girl, isn't it? And so, yeah, it's, so I would think they'll start.
I would think they start going out of it too.
I'm hoping, yeah, with COVID, the way they have it under control, they couldn't do anything, so.
So they want to free the units without grant, or?
Half of it.
Half of it.
They also, she already asked for more, and we can't do that, because we still have some equipment, and I'm not in there, so I'm not gonna. You gotta make something, or you gotta get your stuff out.
And they pay five hundred?
They pay five hundred.
Yeah, that's all, we put a lot of money in that place. We put a lot of money in that building.
Well, and can we, five hundred, even, is it less than five hundred?
Because we put all New Heding air conditioning a couple years ago, and like you said, we roofed, and then they want to do windows now.
And then they were doing their step or something, that's.
We're supposed to do the steps, right?
You can't tell me what people, that'd be six thousand dollars a year.
Right. I have mixed feelings on that.
I don't know the going rate, but I know what I've paid before, and five hundred a month is pretty reasonable for a business rental, you know, down in town, that, that's, so I don't, you know.
We're not at a line, but.
We're not at a line, but.
I don't know either. And I know, well, see, that is not gonna kill them, but.
Sure.
Need to do it to show good faith, or?
Yeah, I don't know either, like I said, I have mixed feelings on it. It's not like it'd be, we have it in the budget, it's in, there you go. Can we make it work?
Seven hundred fifty dollars or four hundred, so. I don't know.
I know it's rough on hospitals, when they can only have ten patients in the hospital.
Right.
Because we're done, but.
Well, they're getting hit now, so they're making.
Well, and this is it, see, I would rather have said, okay, we can play in March and April, that we, but I don't think they're closer, March, really, April.
I thought they were close to March.
Aren't they, no, towards it, in the March.
In the March, when the start, yeah.
Joyce moved?
Yeah, because then Joyce, like, her last day was like, say, whatever, that Thursday, seventeen days, and then she was from there.
Yep. She's.
She's working in Prudential?
Yeah, she had them long, yeah, because of her and one other, that we have to say, and everybody else, and all that.
It's her low.
Yeah.
Could we do like, it's mid-June, July, could we do like half, fifty percent of it for those three months, like a forbearance, and then make that up again, you know, then. And then add it to their rent after they start paying rent again, and over, over the year, over a year's time, collect that back.
Back from a four or six.
Two or twelve months, yeah.
That's a fun.
I like that idea.
Well, we could suggest, suggest, suggest it, because he wants to pay sale.
I would think something would have to be changed in their rental agreement, but, you know, but.
That would actually be. Maybe seven hundred, that's maybe seven hundred dollars.
Seven fifty something.
So we divide that by nine, and we add an eighty-three dollars and thirty cents back onto their rent.
It's after July.
After July, and we could do something to that effect. And then after that is paid, after that nine months is paid back, then go back to the five hundred dollars, so.
Back to the money.
You know, if you five hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty cents for nine months.
Nine months, yeah.
After that, after the nine months.
Then they do that.
Then they give you back to five hundred dollars.
I don't know.
I could see if they agreed to it.
Right, I suppose they thought I am.
Yep.
That would help them with their cash flow, too.
Then that'd get us paid back again to the rent.
Yeah, the broken block, right. But like you said, we got a lot of money seconded too.
We think, Sandy, you wanna shoot that at them, well, we got.
Or do we make an emotion?
We gotta make an emotion, I bet, for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. What's Stephen?
Well, to cut it in, and then.
These three months, and then they got paid the eighty bucks, so.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Sandy, you checked with them on that? Zoning ordinance violations.
I just had Sean form his garage, and Lance had talked about that where he wants to put that, and you, Chris, you say about the same as Trump, but where he wants to put it would be on over the top of the gas line, but he has moved the one shut out to miles, but where he wants to do this isn't gonna work, and that garage is still sitting there, he goes out till August, that's when his permit is up, but, I mean, I think as a council, we need to send him a letter that says, you've got till August sixth or whatever, to get that garage either put in place or get it out of the way too. Because I'm not sure where he's gonna go with it now, do you?
I'm not sure. Was his permit to put it on the spot that he wants to put it on, or was it ever?
Yeah, it was, but the one he uses the gas line, right there.
Is that where it's sitting now, it's just on two by fours?
Right, no, that's not where it's gonna go, that's where Daniel's moving it.
Well, you had it on something else, and now suddenly, you kind of put two by fours on it.
That I didn't realize.
And the gas company, or the wild, would put it over that gas.
No, no. Lance said they take out, if you put it there, so.
Hey, that's what he waiting for.
Say, Chris, if he's moved it out, if he's moved that other garage out, can he put it somewhere else on that lawn and be within?
It's a lot bigger though than that one.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So there's no way he can move it somewhere else and permanently put it without.
I'd have to see where his gas line is for sure, and see if there's any way you can set it to him.
Because they do, and that'd kind of help him go through where it kind of is.
Yeah, but that was before.
You do that.
I didn't know the gas line was there.
I know.
Does he know that, I mean, does Lance probably tell him? Yeah, okay.
I think I just need to start sending him, because it's.
I think through Iowa, yes.
We've said it before, he does it, so that, you know, moves it, so that he knows he can.
Right.
Who's gonna get the phone call?
Go ahead and send him a letter.
Yes.
Yeah.
He will have to, I know, he's got, I don't know, he's doing his tour right now.
Do you need an emotion to do that?
What?
No, honestly.
I'm there.
This one should be aware of it, because.
If we get phone calls?
Right, because it makes it kind of a.
Well, it's that, I still work for Hall.
Yeah.
Have you heard any more on the Idaho, fifty million cars in the back?
No, thirty days, I don't know.
I'm sorry, when's that, end of this month?
I don't know, the people are here, right down there, they serve with notice, so.
Well, I know they got another ambulance center, yeah.
Yeah, I heard it's a different ambulance.
Two, well, they had one, and then they repainted it, and now they got another one in there.
Are we not sure he's not running a business out of there?
I hate to guess what the business is.
Me too. Hot as a hustler.
They haven't been across the street to sell anything.
Dang.
So Sean's garage, can that be declared a nuisance, even though he has a dollar for that?
He has till August sixth, I think it is, because I mean, what if setting out came there, and there's no foundation, and he's in there.
Well, that's just whole house.
I know.
Well.
So it's on the highway.
As of August, the building permit runs out, then we'll send them a nuisance violation.
Yeah, yeah, put all that in there, this is where it will be, so that he can't come back and say he didn't have any idea, because when he first, I called him, he had the building permit, and all this, and he should have not ruined it.
You probably heard it.
He's on the board of adjustments.
He's on the board, yeah.
And he told me, I didn't know I had to do that. Someone nominated him to board the adjustments, or? Bruce Billups is too able to be on the board of adjustments.
I don't know what kind of help he's in, I know he.
He's doing, Bruce Billups is good, I've seen him out in the belt, yeah.
I just haven't seen him, so I wonder.
He doesn't go very far, the last time I've seen him was out of his house, was doing some housework, and he goes to appointments and drives himself type of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He just started.
Two of them, or who's all? No, Sean and Bruce, Michael, back, Sandy, Richter, and I think that's one, because he has one from there, there's five of them.
For Plana? Okay. Okay.
Couldn't be council people. See, that's where the big problem with, we don't know anything about that because we never get any of that anymore. It goes through them, so we don't know anything about it.
Well, if there is, if the board of justice approves anything, then it has to come back to the council. The council has a month's stay on it. But anybody like, if you're putting up a fence or a garage or whatever, that just goes through us now.
Oh, it does, they do that, oh.
Because they need the approval of the council and the board of zoning administrator. And then Darren Bombers, like if I can't figure it out, and we can't figure it out, then I send you Darren.
My neighbor just put a fence, we never, unless it was that, that, right? Cory Gray, Cory Gray?
He had a fence.
Okay, that must have been before I was on.
Yeah, he just got that a couple weeks ago, a week ago.
That is.
But we don't, oh, we don't know.
We don't have to vote on it.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm saying, we don't know anything.
I can like put an agent fact or something, like say you know what.
Yeah.
Mister notes or something, if you got.
Just put it in your notes.
It probably would be, because otherwise, if we do see it, we do wonder, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Not that we need to know all of them, but just that so and so.
So if somebody asks too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to make decisions on how it's done.
Just in case somebody asks us what's the name of building?
Just make it a list of, who got all the permissions and all that.
Now we know that nobody can jump us to say.
And talking about building permits, would like to discuss how we can better inform people that need to get a building permit.
Yeah.
I don't know how, I mean, I probably had to say someone last week, but most of them are fences and that kind of stuff. But then driving around, I see there's, you know, and it's like, okay, wasn't there or wasn't there, I'm not sure, so.
So do you have to get a, do you have to get a permit to do like, um, shingaling and stuff like that? No.
No, it's, structure is there, you do, but you add on to it.
Okay.
Or anything extra that you don't have before.
Cause then I know the zoning permits, and then I sent them the assessor, then they'll come out and then they take pictures of what you added, and then they'll increase the value of the property.
Gotcha.
And.
That's what they, that's ours, for taxation.
So that he says, and so that you're not putting your fence on, I mean, I have that today, but they think that where their fence should go, their neighbor has a great big hedge, and the neighbor's not gonna take the hedge down and.
Or if you're building your garage on a gas line, that's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Can you somehow put a bleep on your bottom of your city bills?
I could, yeah, I was thinking that, cause I put the junk pick back.
Yes.
And I still see people putting up stuff out on drugs too, so I don't know if they didn't get the memo or what.
Well, she, you had it in that place.
Yeah.
There were a couple people going to look it up.
Yeah, but it does get picked up.
Well, there are.
Looking for.
I, I was gonna say, uh, my neighbor came across and asked about it, and I said, yeah, it's, it's been called off. But he said, I think I'll leave mine out for a few days and see if anybody picks it up.
It does.
Put a free sign.
Yeah, put a free on it or whatever. I said, you don't.
He said, otherwise I'll hold that.
I stand.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, five or six words on the city bill sometimes, zoning permits aren't needed.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're gonna build, you need a permit.
We have short several parts, something I did forget to tell you, this is in reports, we have had a lot of people get through, so we got it caught up now.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, a lot of them, now we're two months behind, all of those have paid, I think I have one that hasn't.
Sweet, god, wonderful.
So they probably figured they're not gonna get out.
When I attached that letter that said, you know, the only thing we're dropping is the twenty-five dollar bonus fee and the dollar fifty late fee. You're still gonna owe this money, so don't get yourself into a position where come June first, you got a nine or ten for a thousand dollar bill, and then you're like, Chris, it's shut off.
Suppose you've been saying use your stimulus money?
Well, that might have been, that might have been.
Well, that probably, at least they have that.
How about that one person I talked about last week, did they get that same one?
So we got.
Have you called the assessor this or whoever to see if the house is yet, and who's in it? But that has to change too, because she's gone.
She didn't.
Oh, that.
They got like a year and a half. Well, he wouldn't do that with the house down on, by Mary's or whatever. God, how much, how much did he spend lawyer fees on that? The C N A. Oh, yeah, that was.
It's still there.
He's as bad as what it was.
At least, yeah, something that.
He did that for a reason.
Oh, you better believe it.
I'm gonna go on to number twelve if we're done with this. Okay. Second reading of the ordinance, amending the golden ordinances for water rates. And it's in your thing, and you looked it all over and.
Yep.
I'm not gonna read it to you.
I think some places, yeah, a couple people calling and wanting to see, you know, old rates and the new rates, they're spending, they don't know.
Good.
Then a couple people said, oh, they have the sewer rates, they don't have, I'm like, they're not. So I don't know.
Oh, cause like they're in sewer limits.
Based on that. Yeah, no, didn't they, think the sewer is based upon the water rates?
Yeah.
Well, it is, but I suppose, and then they bought it, but that's.
Cause all the sewer rates are.
Sewer rates are not going up, you said.
No.
There are some.
Cause they went up that one time.
Yeah, and maybe all that lining and then all that repair work, if they've been, um, okay, so only water, I did not either, I thought it was based, at the time.
I thought it was percentage. It was always percentage on.
I thought, I thought they was getting that.
Well, this is, but it's based on what you use, it's not the price.
Right.
So next meeting, is that when they're able to come and voice their opinion, is that the way I'm into May sixteenth? What was May?
They could actually.
We can raise the vote today.
Okay, till July first.
We don't have to do that, so.
No, we don't have to do the next one.
We can waive the next one if you like, you would make a motion to accept this reading and waive the next.
I will start it out.
Okay, then move on. Seconded, any further discussion? If not, is this a, is this just a simple vote, or does it have to be?
This is just a motion, because we now have to get it all tied up, and now it'll be an actual ordinance change.
Okay. So, okay, so move and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting it and waiving the next reading?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Sandy, I'll get her all taped up and we're good on that. Uh, proclamation declaring May as National Foster Care Month.
This lady called me and said that they were gonna have a meeting, and that Grace Lutheran, it's, it's gonna be a webinar, I thought we have a foster care and a lot of people, and so then she wanted to know that the city council would do this proclamation for that May as National Foster Care Month. And she also asked me if we would advertise in favors for them, like, well, you know, we don't do that. I said, I'll publish the, you know, the proclamation.
Can we put a link on our city page?
Oh, I wouldn't do that.
If you'd be willing to do something like that.
Well, just to say that it's foster care month.
It's foster care month.
Don't have to go to the.
Who was it, the, I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, maybe I'm looking.
I've never heard of all of them.
Is this a national thing or?
It's a national.
Yeah, it said national, I'm over it.
I, I guess I've never heard of it, but that'll be the thing.
And then so, uh, no, I'm just, she's affiliated with like that.
I assume DHS, state kinda.
Why does the city have to make it a proclamation, I'm just curious.
You don't have to.
Don't have to.
Asking if you would, if you wanted.
I think it's a marketing thing more than anything.
Right, so then it is the paper, you publish all the proclamation for me.
Oh, so okay, so.
If we do it.
If we do it.
But if we made it a proclamation, would, would it publish?
Yeah, the whole thing has to be published in the minutes.
Oh.
It's not something we can just on our Facebook.
Do we ever do that for any other?
I wonder if we could.
Proclamation, but it was something to do with the city, I mean, I can't remember, what was it? It was something that came from state.
Yeah.
But all, but all it's gonna be is in a small print.
Right, it'll be submitted to the city, you know.
So that's not much.
It's by word or by inch. Not sure how they bill for it now, if it's by word.
It is by word.
By word?
Yeah. That's up to you, I pulled our put on agenda, so.
And it's not something we can just put on our Facebook page? Instead of.
Well, we still have to make the proclamation.
If you have officially made it an proclamation, it's gotta be in the minutes and what we've claimed. Just can't reference. I'm here, so. I'll look for a motion if you want, otherwise we'll move on. Ten seconds. Moving on. COVID nineteen.
I talked with Primgar and I talked with the courthouse today, and I guess that's what I, I just wanna make sure. Primgar is gonna stay closed for two more weeks, but to, you know, foot traffic, and courthouse is gonna stay closed too. Do you want us to continue to rotate with me now, and if the office closes, or what do you wanna do?
How is that working?
Oh, we're fine.
I would say do it for two more weeks, just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, two more weeks is good. Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We got second and third.
Okay, move and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
You guys are working fine, anything's good with you guys.
I was, I looked it up special, cause I thought, oh my goodness, it would be, would be, well, it's not nice this week anyway, but with the nice weather, it should be nice to have the park going, but that's still, parks are still closed for, um, no, they're till fifteen yet, so can't get that over.
So we haven't heard anymore about like Lily or anything like that, have we? I don't have kids in there yet.
State has.
State courts, I don't know.
But fifteen will. Yeah, the fifteen wills open the parks back up, or they'll, they'll allow us to open the parks back up, get the playground equipment and.
Forget about the parks, let's get the salons open.
And fifteen now for the salons, matter of fact, I saw on Jessica's Facebook page that.
They're down to the twenty-seventh.
Wow.
That was a fourteen or fifteen.
Someone just put, I thought I saw on Facebook that the, the, um, governor said till the end of May now.
I haven't seen that one either.
I haven't seen it.
I don't lie, first of course.
What?
I don't lie, first of course you can't go in, I can see that you don't want five of the city in there.
But one person at a time.
You got one person at a time.
Yes.
Not as.
Alright, so.
Jumping to anything.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're adjourned.
But I heard Sue Ball, if you can still get her hair done, lift a mask on, would she will get her hair done there?